Good evening. I call this board meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for joining us this evening. Please be advised in the event of a fire emergency, an alarm will sound. Please know all emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, we request everyone, please turn your cell phones to silent. Thank you for your cooperation. Additions, deletions, and changes to the agenda, Mr. Malasani?
Yes, for additions, for number five, CSE recommendations under consent agenda. Also, aim two under new business is this the board evaluation discussion, a continuation where we left off last meeting. Under personnel, nine, five, six, and seven is approval of a leave of absence for an employee, approval of a substitute maintenance employee, and also appointment of a mentor. That's it.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda, one through five, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The motion carried. Communications, number one correspondence.
Yeah, just one piece tonight. I've been working with Matt Oravec from New York State Transportation regarding the change in speed limit. So, we did come to an understanding on Friday, or excuse me, Monday, yesterday. So during pickup and drop off times from seven to nine and two to four, it'll be the entire speed limit will be 25 miles per hour. So, the new is not what we currently have where it's 20 miles all day. That's no longer the case at any school districts that are, that have speed zones and they're studying them. So it'll be 25 miles during seven to nine and two to four, all the way through from the elementary, all the way through the high school driveway. And then off hours, it's back to the 30 miles an hour. They put new signage up and it will not start until next school year. The signs do go up before the end of school year, they're going to be covered so it doesn't confuse people of the current.
So it won't be 20 miles an hour anywhere anymore?
It will not, well, not in this speed zone.
That was right, man.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Dahl? Students in the headlines.
Students in the headlines. The golf team won 39 straight matches before falling to Livonia last week. The team clinched the LCAA Division III championship. Sophomore Tyler Cook finished second and Noah McCready finished fifth at the county championship, which qualified them to play in Section V Individual Golf Championship on May 13th. Tyler finished third and Noah finished fifth. Sectional golf did start today, so I think they're playing right now.
Yes.
And the tennis team also clinched the LCAA Division II championship. On May 13th, several raiders competed in the Section V Class B three individual tennis champions. Lorenzo Malar Tell is a singles champion. Doubles, first place, Oliver Johnson and Garrett Thompson. Second place, Nate Dahl and Jeremiah Anderson. Third place, Max Poray and Michael Gier. And they are also playing in sectionals as we speak.
Music, the elementary, middle, and high school spring concerts were phenomenal. To honor Mr. Walker in his final high school concert, over 50 alumni came to the concert and surprised Mr. Walker with two songs directed by alumni and music teacher, Mrs. Denise DeAmbro Schaefer. The alumni and high school choruses and the audience joined together to sing the alma mater for the final selection.
Congratulations go out to sixth grader Miles Meyer, who performed the National Anthem on his electric guitar at the day of caring kickoff at Dwyer Stadium in Batavia. And unified basketball team has honored their seniors and families. They will compete in the end of season tournament tomorrow, the 24th.
Mrs. McArdle and Mrs. Cassidy Schaefer hosted the annual district-wide art show on May 16th. Hundreds of people browse the students' artwork and many people expressed their appreciation for the opportunity to see this art.
The cast of Bye Bye Birdie performed at the RBTL Stars of Tomorrow Gala and earned several awards. Congratulations to all. Excellence in overall musical production, acting ensemble, vocal ensemble, and production crew. About help me add some of these names if I butcher them.
Yep.
And then Tommy Murdock, is it?
Elia.
Elia.
Kachar. Eli, Eli.
There we go.
We could actually do.
Bob on the spot. Kutcher.
Yeah, Kachar.
Kachar. Marcus Phillips, Bella.
Pelletier.
Pelletier. We're honored with the overall excellence and leading role and.
Judicator.
Judicator award and the tip of the hat to Josie Curtis, William Dietrich, Rochelle Richter, Danny.
James Kowalski. Juskowski.
Juskowski. Amy Walker for outstanding performances and stage crew roles. Junior Bella.
Pelletier.
Pelletier was named one of the top 40 performers overall and she was selected to perform in the RBTL Stars of Tomorrow New York City Bound Competition on May 23rd. She competes for a chance to represent CMCS at the Jimmy Awards. Bella played Mae Peterson, the years, this year's musical Bye Bye Birdie. You can vote for Bella as a fan favorite online at therochesterfirst.com. Voting ends tomorrow, May 24th.
She's, she's not in yet, right?
Not.
To go to New York City.
No, she has to make talk too.
Yeah.
She got her admissions tonight and then she finds out Thursday.
So, close, very close. It'd be awesome.
Elementary school students, Solara Harkness, Kazek Kincaid, Joselyn Petnella, Thomas Snow, Owen Harrington, Ella Brockenshire, and Valerie Rojas have worked recognized in the Genesee Valley Bosse's Literary Contest. High school students Julia Wasilko, Hannah Harmon, and Kalen Jake also had their work placed in the JV Bosse's Literary Contest. Kalen's piece entitled Lemonade placed third. Hannah's story, True Friendship, placed second. And Julia's story entitled Papa's Apple Tree placed first.
Excellent. We don't have any official guests of the board tonight. We do have some seniors in the audience. And as always, even if you were already here once, please stand up, tell us your name and what your plans are for next year.
Just for seniors, yeah.
Just for, we might put a junior on the spot, too.
I'm trying to keep my from all.
Oh, you're all just, alright, let's start with the boys.
I'm Austin Perry. I'm going to CC next year for sports marketing.
Thank you.
I'm Jeremy Raymond. I'm going to St. John Fisher next year for marketing.
I'm Avril DeMarco. I'm going to David University for physician assistant studies.
I'm Gay Martin. I'm going to St. Bonaventure for education.
Maddie DeVore. I'm going to Fordonia for communications.
I'm Lily Auger and I'm going to Fordonia for speech pathology.
I'm Faith Manchester. I'm going to St. John's Zero for psychology.
Thank you, guys. Mrs. Boos? Okay. Superintendent's report, review of the 2023-2024 school budget propositions and board election results.
Yes, so each year we just review at the board level to make everything official. The budget passed 327 to 134, 7.93% passing rate. For the bus purchase, 347 to 115. The vehicle equipment reserve, it will be established as closing the current one and transferring that money into a new one. Also passed 354 to 107. Mr. Bigford and Mrs. Dahl, 352 and 340 votes for reelection for a three-year term. And we also had 142 write-in votes and you can see them as listed in your board packet. And so a question was raised, just so that everybody understands, does a write-in vote count if the name was misspelled incorrectly? So I did look into that and work with our school attorneys. The vote would count if it misspelled. As long as the misspelling and the election official could, you know, basically ascertain the will of the voter. So in other words, if it's spelled Malasani incorrectly but had a great attempt at Malasani, there's no other voter, it won't be closed, then they would count that.
Okay. Old business, revision to school calendar resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Approved the revision of the school calendar to include Friday, May 26, 2023, the Friday before Memorial Day, as a day of recess for all students and staff. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. That motion carried. Number two, development of board goals. Mr. Malasani, why don't you start?
So if you go to the, can you roll it, go up a little bit more so I can see the number one? So I have taken all the input from the board regarding from your self-evaluation. I've taken those comments and put them into basically four major goals. And I'm just asking for input, how the board would like to modify them, either through wordsmithing or potentially eliminate a goal if it's not the census of the board. So, the first one, I'm going to come over here. I didn't bring my glasses this evening. So, in order to return to district's highest standards of excellence, the Board of Education will. So the board talked about several times is returning to where we were for, you know, pre-pandemic in terms of our results and expectations. And the students have done an outstanding job. They're not there yet, but they're knocking at the door. So the goal wanted, the board wanted to make sure that we get there as fast as we can, as safely as we can in supporting our students with both the resources and high-quality teaching. So the first one would be provide professional development to foster continuous improvement per district professional development plan. Now by law, the board has to approve the professional development plan every year. Now I say law, educational law, every year and then we have to submit it. So, we have actually a three-year professional development plan. We'll be entering year two next year. Implement programs, clubs, activities, experiences to ensure student engagements and are prepared for both college and career. Again, these are comments that the board invited. Provide resources at all levels to improve reading and math proficiency. Stop me when you want to talk about them. If you like them, we just leave them there, whatever, or you want to wordsmith them.
I'd say run through all of number one here.
What's that?
Run through all of number one.
Okay. Develop a more vibrant music and arts theater program. Next one is hire and retain high-quality individuals that contribute to the district's success. And you talked about several positions in your, in your board comments. Develop a succession plan for all open positions over the next 24 months. Revise job descriptions to reflect current and expected job responsibilities. As you know, every time somebody retires, especially if they're in office types of positions, very first thing I bring to you is that job description to make sure it's current with what expectations would be for 2023, but most importantly, looking in the future. Some of the skill sets that was once required are no longer necessary. Next is produce a succession planning for all positions to be open in the next 18 months. So, I guess obviously one or, one or both of those could go because you have a little bit about hiring and retaining high-quality individuals. So, what would the board like to do?
I think 18 months is more realistic. I'm buying either way.
And I think with, with all these, as we go through them, one through four, Mr. Malasani definitely made sure to include every comment that we had in the board's self-evaluation prior to us even editing it. So, are we sure that these are even, I mean, goals should be maybe a little tough to attain, but certainly should be attainable. Assuming we don't have another global pandemic.
Sure.
Are we, are we stretching it here for you and the administration or?
No, I think everything that you have listed is definitely you can develop a plan. Now, will we accomplish in two years? Some of these are going to take multiple years. You can't just develop a highly effective theory program in two years. But you would put together a plan, you know, that possibly will be implementing year two of these two years with the goals. You know, take people, get in the room and design the plan. But I think everything that you've listed there is doable. You know, a couple of these things are just looking at a work session for the board with respect to succession planning and whatever the case may be. Others, you know, are timely, job descriptions are, you know, are a timely thing. But I think you're fine when you look at those. I think again, there's three of them about hiring. There's 18 and 24 months and then the one just before that, hire and retain high-quality individuals. You know, in the past, it talked about staff, teachers. A few years ago, we went to staff and now we added the word individuals. Because it's every position from bus driver to clean, everything we want, we want a high-quality individual.
Do you think that would be a cleaner read if you combine those three?
I, I would think so. I think right off the bat, we know the, the board's intent here, so I think it's certainly doable.
Okay. Anybody disagree with combining those three to something cleaner?
It's a good idea.
Okay.
Is there something that you would like to see in there that I potentially missed?
I'm just looking through all of this and want to, you know, I'm a big proponent of, you know, combining services, shared services, whatever terms least offensive.
Yep, you see that.
Okay.
You see that down in financial.
Thank you.
Thanks. Let's go to number two. So demonstrate fiscal leadership. So one of the things is the board knows, we've been meeting now facilities committee for, gosh, seems like maybe eight or nine months in designing our next capital project. So I shared the four goals of the project with our school community, make sure that all the decisions that we make are fulfilling those four goals. Next is develop a strategic five-year financial plan for the district. Mr. Nardone and our committee met after our last meeting. We'll be meeting with a consultant here in the next several weeks through June. Our goal is to bring back a plan for the board to consider, to make sure that our district is in good financial position for future years to come. Assure transparency in the budget development process. And again, we're an open book. Everything that we do is taped. All the documents are visible for our entire community to see. And then whatever we have to do by law with respect to publications, there's certain information there in offices throughout our campus. So everybody has access to that. Explore enhancing shared services. That's one that this just mentioned. In order to provide meaningful programs and opportunities for students. So this year, one added service is to make sure that our JV baseball team could perform and compete. We have an agreement and understanding with Wheaton Child is producing an athlete or two with the district. You know, early on, we talked about, again, it was athletics related with Leroy potentially for sustaining our football program. We work with, we also met with the Board of Education or several members for our services with the Byron Bergen Community Board of Education earlier in the fall, too, looking at opportunities to share services. I think this is, is going to be an ongoing thing with enrollments between 50 to 62 kids in a class in order to provide experiences. We're going to have to share services with other districts. Explorer, let's see here. Next one is continue to be responsive to mandates while balancing the rights for our school district. So I'd like maybe a little bit more information on that. That's little, I guess, general. I know we have educational mandates. I totally get that. But balancing with the right, what is right for our school district. So I, I think we have to kind of understand what is right for our school district is what, like it or not, in terms of what we're required to do with mandates is coming from the New York State Education Department. Decisions that can be made here locally, doesn't mean we can't push back, please understand that. But when we're required by law to do it mandated-wise, we would have to abide by that while we litigate wherever the case may be. Alright, if not, they replace me and they replace you. It's pretty clear right in the commissary's recs. But what is right for our school district? So, I just want to make sure I understand that. If there's any pending things that I should be aware of, or the board should be aware of, or wants to make everybody aware of, or something like that.
Is, is there a way to change that wording to balance where it came from and what you're saying? Anybody?
I can certainly doctor it up and bring back another recommendation to you.
When it says right, does it mean like?
Yeah.
Like fiscally right or like a good fit?
It's, it's under fiscal leadership.
Yeah.
Yeah. But it's.
With, I'm sorry.
No, no.
With the capital project that you're talking about, that obviously I'm asking you, would include any potential current or future boiler issues? Is that correct?
Yes, that will be addressing much of what you just said. So we're hoping to fix our current issue potentially either an emergency project or with end-of-year funding and then using the other boilers for replacement parts in the other building. So we are looking at options. Actually, we meet, I think it's next Wednesday with our team to come up with some, some options for us.
Thank you.
Let me leave it then, to continue to be responsive to mandates while balancing what is right for our school district. If somebody wants to reach out offline to either me or Bob about that, do so. Otherwise, it might either get drastically changed or slide away.
You can change the word, you can change the word right to best and that would.
Right.
Yeah, but mandates is still in there, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
So. And just please reach out to me. I'll doctor that up. Explore innovative cost-saving measures. Word grants behind there while maintaining quality educational programs for all students. So, just, was it yesterday or Friday you put in a grant, right?
Yeah, a week ago now. We put through a security grant to try to get about $400,000 from the federal government. I think it's on 360. So I don't think we're going to hear it until October, but I'm hopeful that goes through and it'll be big. It'll be nice.
Well, can that money be used for anything?
We had to put in the grant what we wanted to use it on, so I believe we put items like security film on front windows. We put new doors for the elementary schools. Some of the doors are just having a tough time latching because of the sun. And more cameras and servers for those cameras. Because every time you add a camera, you have to have the server capacity so that the cameras can be on storage for about 30 days is the recommended time. So as we add more cameras, we need that updated server.
Can you pay a school resource officer's salary out of that?
They, they said no, but we tried for it. But they said it probably won't go through, but we tried anyway.
Yeah, very good. That sounds good. Thank you.
And then it says focus annual capital outlay projects to improve the physical plan. So here is, obviously, you know, we do $100,000 every year. I would say for the last three years at the state level, they, they have asked to be at $250,000. And if you're a larger school, more than, I think it's 12,000 students, for that actually be 500, up to $500,000. Then it's scaled all the way down to 250. Us being a small school, there's potential that this district could go out and do a capital outlay project, $250,000 per year. And also they're expanding it. So in other words, right now, when we do a $100,000 capital project, we have to do all the work in one building. So if we wanted to do something with door access and so forth, we would have to do everything in the elementary or middle high school. Where some things make sense, they should be district-wide, you know, some of the changes. So you don't have to wait two years for it. So what I understand with the new proposal, it would be $250,000 and it can be district-wide. So give you greater flexibility. So this would be ideal if this comes into place next school year. The reason why I say that, that we would be able to utilize our money, the grant, the grant money to receive from the federal government, so it would not be an immediate tax increase to the community. Right now, we budgeted $100,000. We went to 250. You're looking at about 2% increase on a tax levy just to make that happen. But if it were to happen in the next year or so, we would be able to utilize our money and then we receive that aid the next year. We're right around, Mr. Nardone, 84, 86%?
They're projecting 86%.
86%. So basically, it costs the district 14 cents on the dollar. So that would be ideal. But it's coming. It's been talked about in both the House and the Senate this year. During budget talks, they both approved that, but it never made it to the final budget. Okay, number three. Ensure a safe and secure orderly school environment. Implement safety and security measures supported by our safety and security audit. Audits, it should read actually. Also explore additional security support for students and staff. I know the board's sentiment with that, so I think that's pretty easily read. Implement a comprehensive wellness plan for both students and staff that will focus on the physical, emotional, and social well-being of all. So this will be, we have a wellness plan, a board policy wellness plan. But a well-being is much more than just a wellness plan. So this will be an undertaking, will probably be a multi-year process, getting all the right stakeholders in the room, looking at your board policy, modifying it, and then also looking at a comprehensive, a social-emotional plan to support our students. What's, what's nice about it, believe it or not, COVID has led to this. And I mean by that is when the kids all return back to in-depth, in-person lessons here at school, we actually surveyed the students in a, in a small questionnaire. And from that, we did individual interventions, could be small group, could be large group interventions from the feedback, feedback they provided us. So I think we have a good plan. While we add the counseling plan to this component, I think you'll have a comprehensive district-wide plan that takes care of all of your stakeholders within our school community. But you're looking at a multi-year plan here. Yes.
Those two goals put together cover half dozen or so comments that were made in the self-evaluation.
Without a doubt. This one was, this one was probably the most common comment amongst the board, talking about the social-emotional well-being of all, everyone involved.
And security.
Safety and security, 100%.
The two of them together.
Yes.
And even though there's only, I guess where I'm going with that is, there's only two bullets, but of those two bullets, that's, if you go back to the board's self-evaluation, that's most people's numbers one and two.
100%. That's accurate. Okay, number four, the board self-demonstrating leadership in its role representing our school community. Ensure that district's culture aligns with our mission and beliefs. Strengthen communications with parents and community residents to increase our understanding instructional programs and school district activities and initiatives. So this is, you know, communication, parents and guardians want information pushed to them. They don't want to go look for it. I think we all were a matter of convenience with respect to society. So how do we effectively communicate with our parents and guardians? So actually, the survey just closed last Friday, May 19th. And I'll be sharing out the, how parents and guardians want to be communicated from school to home, very certainly. So I think this one goes right in line. And again, the idea of being transparent with what we do as a school community is imperative. Next is continue harmonious working relationship with the village, town, and county governments. I tell you, our village and town support the school an awful lot. Sometimes you may not see it through equipment and man-hours. And they're just outstanding. You know, I think you all know the water leak that we had out here on a Friday. Everybody maybe had the day off on a Friday, maybe past our hours. They were here for four or five hours to get that fixed and were able to run our buildings and didn't have to close it down. But they do so many wonderful things. We do a lot of intermunicipal agreements with them. There's some of the work that we do through our capital outlay projects over the years, too. So certainly want to continue that. One of the things that Jeremy and I are working on is another grant and is dealing with electrification, not just of school buses, but a grant that we have to actually co-partner with a village or town or county entity. And actually, the village, town, or county entity is the, what's the word? They are major.
Kind of like the parent company.
Yeah, yeah. They have to actually agree to work with us rather than us to work with them. So it's money that's actually afforded to village, towns, and counties. But if your school district is in one of those agencies, you can partner with them. So I've worked with Mayor Deliverdo. They are on board. And I'll probably touch out, touch base with Mr. Pengrasio in terms of providing some sort of electrification for the vehicles that are coming our way. And the goal is just to be at no expense to the taxpayer. So some of the things, if you go to certain schools, you might see two or three charging stations for every vehicle. So we will be looking at, again, to. So we will be looking at, again, this is the big picture, two or three charging stations in each parking lot early on and also looking at enough to take care of all of our buses. So.
You're, you're, you're including, you're rolling the buses into what you just said about the town and the village and the county?
Yeah, so, yes. The answer is yes to that. And again, we might put in hypothetically for a million dollars, they may approve us for 250,000. We may put in for 2 million and be approved for 500,000 combined with the village and the school district. But it's, it's money that's available and I think it's important of us to go after it because we know by 2032, you need to be completely electrified with respect to our school vehicles according to today's standard. I think it'll be pushed out, but according to today's standard. So we need to start working towards that. And one of the things too, we all, we learned already is that we have enough capacity with respect to electricity coming from Mumford to take care of our entire plant. What I mean for that, for all the different electric vehicles that we would have and buses, right now they exist. It doesn't mean that they're going to hold all that voltage and so forth back until we are ready. So the goal is to get access to it before it goes down the road to Albon or another district or within our school community. Because when it's not there, it's going to cost a great deal of money to bring it here seven, five to seven years down the road. So just trying to do a little pre-planning with that. So next one, design a plan to celebrate 125 years of existence. So next school year, Caledonia High School specifically, it's been in existence for 125 years. The school, the school itself's been around longer than, but the high school with graduations and so forth, right at 125 years. So we will do some certain things within our school community where we're celebrating the past, you know, the current and then also the future of our school community and try and make it some, like some sort of celebration or attention, you know, all year long. It might be like look back on Friday, Thursday's look back, maybe show them past yearbooks and maybe do a prompt that can allow our school community to engage through social media or that could be concerts. I know at 100 years, I went through all the information that our community did in 1998, I believe. It was just before I came and Mary Catherine Hamilton shared it with me. I went through every single thing, you know, what we provided this community was pretty special. So obviously it's 125, it's not as big as 100, believe it or not, in terms of celebrations. But we want to honor that. We have certain signs around schools, nice developed signs outside and so forth. But that award will start this summer and go through all next year.
What year did you graduate, Mr. Bickford?
125 years ago.
What year did you graduate?
1979.
79, Mr. Shlicky?
I'm older than you. That's all, see.
So the next one is continue to strengthen the relationships within the school board of education. So that is again, through workshops and so forth and your collegiality with one another. Certainly I think as a board, we're, we're more effective today than we were, you know, a couple of years ago. So again, continuing, working together. Keep social media current, relevant and accurate. I, I agree. It's one of those things that's very tough to manage, but it's something I know if that's the board, the, the will of the board, the greater attention will be given to that, potentially personnel and so forth to make sure that our digital footprint is something that's respectable, that we would expect from our school community.
Is there anything that anybody thinks is glaringly missing that they want to share at this moment? So you have those couple of things to kind of massage and combine?
Yeah. What I'll do is I'll, I'll change that and I'll share with the board and then in our June 12th meeting, hopefully get to a document that you're, you're proud of and that we could approve or you as a board could approve. If it's, you're not ready, that's perfectly fine. We'll take the time to make sure it's what we want to do as a board of education.
Chris, real quick, the revised job descriptions, that's kind of redundant because we already do it, right? Every time there's a turnover, so.
But it came out of.
Yeah, I just threw all your comments.
No, I know. I'm saying that's the one that we could probably strike, right?
I would agree.
Taken care of, but.
So my, my thought with that, I think I might've put one of those in there. My thought was, we're hiring people now and it's been communicated. There's many hats worn by the administration at the district. And so if we can bring in an employee who has a certain skill set, who might be able to fill that void even before the void is there, you know, a couple of years, three years ahead, let's try to strive for that, looking into the future instead of, like we said, you know, the needs change over time. We don't need people to sit at a typewriter anymore. So I was just thinking, have foresight to plan on that.
It could be, in that respect, it can go back to part of the hiring and retaining.
It could be. I, I remember reading the comment and realized it was yours, Michael, but I remember it talked about potentially that the data privacy officer. And it's so that, again, so many administrators have several titles. He said, all right, when we go out and we hire the next assistant principal, maybe we should also be looking for the data privacy officer so that it's not the principal. That's what we're seeing that.
And then, and then when we change the job description at the time, we wait till they're hired and then change their job description when we offer it to them.
So that's kind of what I was thinking is, is there a way? And that's exactly what I thought, like, is there someone else who can wear that hat for you? We're hiring these people, we've got a young administrative team.
Yeah, we're still going to hire the best assistant principal. And if they should hasten to be good at that.
Yep.
Then we'll change the job description. So not hire for that.
Sure. Just also keep in mind in the, the job description, the very last one is to perform duties assigned by the superintendent. That's always the last one. So we also, we also want that flexibility. Because again, we will be dealing with issues next year that we don't even know about just yet. It's just going to fall in somebody's lap to resolve, so.
I think as long as the conversation is happening right now, that point is, is good to make when we're talking about shared services, which is also a goal, that there has been discussions in the past of even things like, like business officials. Well, okay, but look what we're making him do. So we're still getting our money's worth and we're not going to get the same thing if we're going to be sharing business official with another district. So let's see.
Is there anything about that?
This is what, five, six years?
Yeah, I would say five, six, seven years ago, the discussion was shared business administrator, shared superintendent. I remember having those discussions with the board and briefly, so briefly, but yes. So I will, you guys can email me, share thoughts I agree with, that some of them could be, again, knowing the intent moved into the hiring plan with job descriptions, we could add that as part of the plan. Just let me know what you would like to see changed and I will do that on the board's behalf and bring it back and Chris will present. And then if you're happy with it, approve. If not, just go back. I, you know, there's enough there for me to begin to work with my administrative team throughout the summer to move this work forward. So don't feel like you have to have it done by the next board meeting. Get it right, then meet your needs and there's enough there for me to begin to work with my team.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Nardone, quickly please, that grant that you're talking about. You said we more than likely can't pay the salary of the, the school resource officers. I understand that as of this minute. My question to you is, did you have to put a list in this thing and you included the school resource officer?
Yes.
So they might come back and say you can do one, two and six, but you can't. All right, what if like seven pops up or eight down the road that you didn't put in there? Can, can we then use that money differently?
Yeah, so the grant writer that we utilized for this said you can always try to make amendments to it. She's seen it sometimes approved, sometimes not approved. It all depends. So what will happen is if you get approved, you have a three-year budget, so to say. The district has to come up with 25% of the funds. So let's say if you're asking for a $500,000 grant, I got to come up with 25% of the $500,000 and I got to pay for that out of the district's money. The other 75% comes from the federal money. You come up with a three-year plan and spend that $500,000. And then if over three years you want to change that plan, you can always do an amendment like we would do to the federal grants. There's no guarantee that it will be approved, there's no guarantee it will not be approved. So it's one of those things, if something changes and we want to allocate that money differently, like hey, we don't need new doors because the capital project covered that. We can go back and say, we'd like to amend this grant to do X instead of Y. They could say yes, they could say no.
Regardless, we'll find a, a way to use the money.
100%.
All right. I was, I was thinking outside the box for the school resource officers, so that's enough for tonight.
Thank you. New business, approval of bid resolved that the board of education upon the recommendation of the superintendent approved the bid for a trans-tech van school bus in the amount of 56,500 to Leonard Bus Sales. Motion please.
I'll make it.
End of second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed say nay. That motion carried. Number two for new business, board evaluation discussion. Everybody received the email from me with the adjusted, the narrative part to our board self-evaluation. I did receive a few comments. There was no significant changes after those comments. Is everybody happy with what they saw? And it is in our executive session notes today as the clean copy that will be our official board self-evaluation.
Sounds good.
All right. Executive session resolved that the board of education adjourned to executive session at 6:41 PM to discuss the employment and employee history of particular persons, matters leading to the appointment, confidential student records protected by FERPA and contract negotiation with the business administrator. Motion please.
I can make it.
End of second.
Sure.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed say nay. That motion carried. See back from executive session. Last on the agenda is personnel. Personnel number one through seven as laid out in the agenda. We have approval of substitute teachers is number one. Number two, appointment of non-athletic positions. Number three, appointment of interscholastic coaches. Number four, amendment to summary of compensation for business administrator. Number five, approval of leave of absence. Number six, approval of substitute maintenance employee. Number seven, appointment of mentor. I have a motion for one through seven, please.
I'll make it.
I'm going to take it from John and seconded by Jamie. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed say nay. That motion carried. Resolve that the board of education adjourn the meeting of May 23rd, 2023 at 8:03 PM. Motion please. Last one you both, everybody spoke.
Oh, yeah.
Motion by Jamie Fitch, seconded by John Bickford. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Everybody have a good evening.